Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the legislative session for the Orange County Legislature dated November 4th, 2021. The time is now 3:30. I would like to call the meeting to order and start by asking you all to please stand and for a moment of silence. And I would ask that you keep in your prayers and thoughts the passing of former legislator Joe Magano. This will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and followed by the National Anthem. So please remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
At this time, I would welcome to the People's Chamber Braden Ross, Sr., at Port Trivis High School, who will lead us in the singing of the National Anthem.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? Was so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose brush-rice and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say how stars spangled, better yet, wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave!
In the back of the legislature, I'd like to present you with this certificate. Thank you, Braden.
Braden, thank you so much. Okay, we will start with roll call. Vero?
Here.
Paduke?
Here.
Amo?
Here.
Anagnostakis?
Benton?
Here.
Resha?
Here.
Genie?
Here.
Fagion?
Here.
Hines?
Here.
Kulusek?
Here.
Luhon?
Here.
Menuda?
Here.
O'Donnell?
Here.
Ruskovich?
Here.
Sassy?
Here.
Sierra?
Here.
Stenganga?
Here.
Sutherland?
Here.
Tortell?
Here.
Tui?
Here.
Benelli?
Here.
Nineteen present. Two absent. Okay, under public participation, we do have three individuals that have asked to speak on agenda items. The first one is Ron. Ron of Bork?
Good afternoon, county legislators. My name is Ron of Bork, and I'm fortunate to live in Goshaun, New York. I'm directing you to item 16 on the agenda. It's a resolution authorizing the county executive, in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Health, to accept and appropriate funds from New York State in the whopping sum of $3.5 million. $3,547,330, to be exact. I listened to Mr. O'Donnell's health committee meeting on this item, and I was also able to research it on the state's public health fellowship program. But a lot of it is unexplained to me, and I think it should be to you as well. It's a lot of money. At the committee meeting, Health Commissioner Gelman said they would be hiring two fellows, an undergraduate and a graduate. And the state website explains that these positions range from $41,000 a year to $64,000 a year. That's about $100,000 in salaries. That leaves a big chunk of money, $3.4 million, for this program to spend after you've spent on those modest salaries. These two fellows are going to do outreach work, as far as I can tell, on COVID in the local communities. And they will work a total of 35 hours a week each. So if I'm right, and I don't know, I think that boils down to having two students go around the county pushing COVID shots in our county. That's what I think it's for. I don't know. The people will be paid only $100,000 to do this, and so I'm asking, why is the state handing us $3.4 million? What are we going to do with it? The commissioner said she anticipated they would spend the money on rent, travel, advertising, and phones. That's a lot of expenses for two fellows working 70 hours a week. Are you planning to rent a big facility? What is the facility going to be used for? And then there was this curious verbiage I found on the state website. Fellows will support the public health mission. I don't know. What is that health mission for this county? Have you held a public hearing to discuss the public mission? I'd like to know what it is. To be perfectly candid, I am very worried about $3.5 million payment from the state for a health mission. It's nice to put money in our county budget. I understand that. But what strings are attached? I have to admit it, it suspiciously looks like a bribe.
Ms. Bork?
And I fear that it is underhanded way of taking over our independently county-run health department.
Ms. Bork, your three minutes are up. Thank you so much for your comments. We appreciate your attention.
I have more to say if you want to hear. If anyone wants to hear Mr. O'Donnell, let me know.
Our next speaker is Matt Higgins from the town of Woodbury.
Don't start the clock yet.
No way, that's fine.
So, listen, I come here today because I don't like what I'm seeing about you're taking all this money in. It's not free money. It's our money. You understand that? You're talking about taking this grant money like it's free. It's not free. It's our tax money. And I don't like to see you wasting it, which I feel that you will be doing, as the woman mentioned, about the $3.5 million from the state health department, which we don't need. You could say no to that. You don't have to go along with that. But you all probably will, because that's what you always do. You take the money, don't you? Because you want a bigger government, and that's what you like, just make it a little bigger with all this money. That's what you do all the time, and I'm fed up of it. You should be thinking about the taxpayers here. What are you going to do? You're going to have to hire another five guys? This is what I'm reading about in your agenda here. You're going to hire three clerks, right? With this money? We don't know. We don't know what you're going to do with this $3.5 million. Nobody's looked at it. You probably didn't look at it yourselves. So I want to find out if you're going to accept our tax money being used for testing sewage treatment plants. I want to find out if you're going to accept money. Is this part of it? You're going to accept money for sewage treatment plant testing for COVID? Because I'm not in favor of that. The whole idea of this county being involved with sewage testing is insane. It's a privacy issue, not to mention, we're not afraid of COVID. The people in this room aren't afraid. That's why we're here.
He's selling us down the road, is what I say. And I'm fed up of it. I'm getting the hell out of this county because of your stupid actions. I'm not in favor of $1.6 million or $1.7 million in grants from Homeland Security. We don't know how that money will be spent or if strings are attached to it. You probably didn't even read it. Homeland Security, more of a police state. You got three guys out there that have to check us into this county building. Security. You need another three? You're going to put up a big fence around the place? Don't accept the money. There's going to be strings attached to it. We don't want it. It's our money. We don't want it to be spent from Homeland Security. We don't want favors from them, and we're tired of it. And I'm not in favor of accepting the $3.5 million from the state health department. This is our money. And you're adding three clerks and two other jobs. These positions, we have to pay for. It's our tax money, and it's already too high. It's $3,000, or it's going to be $4,000, or whatever it is, for this county. And you guys, you all have an office and a phone number. You can't even list your phone number or your email addresses. But at any rate, you have the money. You shouldn't take it. It's our money.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. We appreciate you.
The government is already too big.
That's right.
And the people in this room are not afraid of COVID. They're afraid of taxes that are already too high.
Mr. Higgins, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Brianna, and I'm sorry, I can't read your last name, so Lembo?
Good afternoon. My name's Brianna. So I just graduated college back in May, and I am now aware of Resolution Number 16, as the woman brought up before, of $3.5 million going to fellowships. So that is people like me, who are in graduate or undergraduate programs, who will be receiving that money amongst other people who have been retired, nurses, social workers, students, et cetera. So my concern, I think the other woman brought up a really great point of where it was going, but my concern is, I was just in a nursing home for the past five months throughout this pandemic. We've had two COVID outbreaks in it. Now, the CNAs there are being paid $13.50 an hour, and most days, there was only two people on that floor. If you ask me, I think if that's a health and mental health fund for a grant, it should be going to people that are doing the dirty work, who don't have any help. And there's people laying in, excuse my language, their own feces for eight hours a day. That's unacceptable. That's going to be all of us one day, including you guys. We could all be in a nursing home throughout the pandemic, living like we're in a jail. So if you ask me, if this money is for health and mental health purposes, it needs to go to people who are experiencing those health and mental health issues. For example, there are plenty of children, I also was just in a school, working for free throughout the pandemic, 30 hours a week, in a school in Long Island. Now, every one of those kids in middle school were suicidal, depressed, anxious, wanted to die. Don't you think we need more, you know, social workers, psychologists, people like that in schools? You know, more free programs in our community? That money should be going towards actual mental health, not two fellows or wherever else it's going to go. So my question is, why isn't that money going towards people who need it? We have a huge depression epidemic. Everyone's suicidal. Look at what this pandemic has done to everyone in the past two years. It's unacceptable. And I think we really need to question and think about the people we want to help. We're all human here. You know, it's not me versus you guys. We're all human, and we all want a better society, and I'm 25. I don't want to raise my kids in this society. I don't even want to have kids in the society I'm living in. I can't even believe that, I just lost my job Monday because of my own body anatomy, because I don't agree. You know, that money should be going to people like me who just graduated, and I could barely afford to pay my bills. And I'm just being super transparent here. That money should be going towards mental health and public health. It shouldn't all just be about COVID and fellowships and replacing the people like me who have worked their whole lives to get where they are and are now in debt. You know, to me, it's just not right, and it doesn't sit well with me when we have, like I said, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of Americans, especially in this county, who are homeless, depressed, suicidal, using drugs, addicted to substances. Why isn't it going towards that? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We will move on to, are there any referrals, withdrawals, or consents?
Madam Chair?
Yes, legislator Tui.
I request consent to place on the agenda Resolution of the Orange County Legislature Supporting Operation Green Light for Active Military Service Members in Transition to Civilian Life. And if I may, I'd like to read the entire consent resolution and to help bring further light and understanding.
Let me just take a second first. We have a second. Legislator Ruskovich. Yes, legislator Tui, please continue.
Okay, the Orange County Legislature Consent Resolution. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature Supporting Operation Green Light for Active Military Service Members in Transition to Civilian Life. Whereas the residents of Orange County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women that served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas 22,000 veterans currently reside in Orange County. And whereas the Orange County Legislature seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas New York State veteran population has decreased by 44% over the last 20 years. And whereas veterans continue to serve their community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, church groups, and civil service jobs and positions. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas 22 veterans a day commit suicide nationally. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk of suicide during their first year after military service. Whereas the Orange County Legislature appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel made while defending freedom and believes specific recognition be accorded them in appreciation of their service and to demonstrate the honor and support they have earned. Therefore, be it resolved, the Orange County Legislature hereby declares November 7th through November 13th, 2021... Be it resolved, the Orange County Legislature hereby declares November 7th through November 13th, 2021, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service, and designates Orange County as a green light for military service county. Therefore, be it further resolved, that in observance of Operation Green Light, the Orange County Legislature encourages the citizens of Orange County, in patriotic tradition, to recognize the importance of honoring all of those who have made immeasurable sacrifices and helped to preserve the freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence dated November 4th, 2021. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, legislator Tui. And if there are no objections, we'll put this on as item number 1/B.
Please add all Republicans to that.
So we'll move... And Independence Party leader, Ms. Penno, as well. So we will start our agenda, and I put this at the very beginning of the agenda. So item 1B. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature Supporting Operation Green Light for Active Military Service Members in Transition to Civilian Life. Okay, any comments? I just want to thank legislator Tui and legislator Ruskovich and the staff for putting this on at the last minute. I think it's very important. It is an operation and a program that's being sponsored by NISAC, and I felt it was only appropriate that we do recognize this all-important issue. So, thank you very much. Okay, and we will do this by roll call. Amo? Paduke?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Should have been Vero. Benton?
Yes.
Resha?
Yes.
Genie?
Yes.
Fagion?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Kulusek?
Yes.
Luhon?
Aye.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ruskovich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Sierra?
Yes.
Stenganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Tortell?
Yes.
Tui?
Yes.
Benelli? Yes. Okay, item number one, and this is a voice vote. Legislator Benton, Resolution Accepting and Confirming the Report of the Apportionment of the Mortgage Tax for the period April 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2021, as computed from statement filed by the county clerk. Comments? And this is a voice vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you. A1 is received and filed. AA1 is also received and filed. Number two. Legislators Benton and Sutherland, Resolution Amending and Reaffirming the Orange County Investment Policy. Comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number three. Legislators Benton, Hines, Menuda, A Resolution Enabling the County of Orange to Maximize Its Investment Earnings on County Funds. Okay. I'm sorry, this was a roll call. Okay, so we're going to do a roll call. Okay. Vero?
Yes.
Paduke?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Benton? Resha?
Yes.
Genie?
Yes.
Fagion?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Kulusek?
Yes.
Luhon?
Yes.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ruskovich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Sierra?
Yes.
Stenganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Tortell?
Yes.
Tui?
Yes.
Benelli? Yes. Okay, item number one, and this is a voice vote. Legislator Benton, Resolution Authorizing a Private Sale and Conveyance of Certain County-owned Lands Acquired by Reason of a Failure to Redeem Said Lands From a Tax Sale to Orange County. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number five, which is also a voice vote. Legislator Benton, Resolution Authorizing a Private Sale and Conveyance of Certain County-owned Lands Acquired by Reason of a Failure to Redeem Said Lands From a Tax Sale to Orange County. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number six, also a voice vote. Legislator Benton, Resolution Approving the Applications for the Correction of Certain Errors Appearing on the 2021 Tax Rolls for Certain Towns and Districts in Ordering the Correction of Said Errors. Comments? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. A7 is received and filed. Number seven, this is a roll call vote. Legislators Vero and Fagion, Local Law Introductory Number Five of 2021, A Local Law Amending Local Law Number Eight of 1972, Fixing the Compensation for the Commissioners of Elections as Last Amended by Local Law Number Thirteen of 2020. Comments? Legislator Tortell?
Add it, please.
Be added? Tortell, added. Any other comments or questions? Okay, roll call, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduke?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Benton?
Yes.
Resha?
Yes.
Genie?
Yes.
Fagion?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Kulusek?
Yes.
Luhon?
Aye.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ruskovich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Sierra?
Yes.
Stenganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Tortell?
Yes.
Tui?
Yes.
Benelli?
Aye.
Twenty ayes. Number eight is a roll call vote. Legislators Fagion and Kulusek, Resolution Allowing the County Executive, in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Planning, to amend Resolution Number 332 of 2018 to direct the funding for capital project CP 501-19S. Comments? Legislator Luhon?
Like, be added?
Yes, legislator Luhon was added. Sierra? Minority Leader Paduke?
Yeah, just a comment. I think last year, you know, I think it's important when we have the public here that why can't our resolutions be on our screen? So they have an opportunity to read rather than just the headlines. I mean, I think it's important, and I mentioned it a year ago, and I thought IT was looking into it, and if there's a reason why we can't, I'd like to know about it, because I think it's important that they get to see what we're reading on our resolutions rather than just the title, because there's a lot of information that they could digest.
I totally agree with you. We are in transition, and for today's purposes, this was as far as we could go at this point in time. But it is being worked on.
Thank you.
And all of this information, as far as our agendas, are also available online. Majority Leader Paduke, did you want it to be added?
No.
Okay, so we're going to go to the roll call for number eight. Vero?
Yes.
Paduke?
Yes.
Amo?
Yes.
Benton?
Yes.
Resha?
Yes.
Genie?
Yes.
Fagion?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Kulusek?
Yes.
Luhon?
Yes.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ruskovich?
Yes.
Sassy?
Yes.
Sierra?
Yes.
Stenganga?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Tortell?
Yes.
Tui?
Yes.
Benelli? Yes. Okay, item number eight. Legislators Benton and Kulusek, Resolution Approving the Release of the Counties Interested in and to a Certain Deed Sale Parcel to the Previous Owner of Record. And this is a voice vote. Okay. Any comments? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number five, which is also a voice vote. Legislator Benton, Resolution Authorizing a Private Sale and Conveyance of Certain County-owned Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton?
Yes.
Resha? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulasek? Luhon?
Aye.
Menuda?
Yes.
O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy?
Yes.
Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tortell? Tuohy? Benelli? Twenty ayes. All right, number nine. Legislators Fagion and Heinz, resolution to allow the Orange County Department of Planning to transfer capital project funds. This is a roll call vote. Any questions or comments? Luhon? Added? Tortell added as well? Thank you. Anything else? Roll call, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton? Resha? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulasek? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy?
Yes.
Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tortell? Tuohy? Benelli? Twenty ayes. Number ten. Legislators Heinz, Stiganga, Vero, Fagion, Sierra, Sassy, Luhon. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Emergency Services, Emergency Management, to accept and appropriate grant funds from the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services. Comments?
Add it.
Added? Tortell? Luhon, I see you shaking your head, correct?
Come on over here.
Oh, okay. Did you want to speak then? I'm sorry, I saw your hand. Okay. Minority Leader Paduk? Added? Sutherland? Anyone else? Okay. This is a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number eleven. Legislators Heinz, Stiganga, Vero, Fagion, Sierra, Sassy, Luhon. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Emergency Services, Emergency Management, to accept and appropriate grant funds from the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services. Comments?
Add it.
Added? Tortell? Luhon, I see you shaking your head, correct?
Come on over here.
Oh, okay. Did you want to speak then? I'm sorry, I saw your hand. Okay. Minority Leader Paduk? Added? Sutherland? Anyone else? Okay. This is a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number eleven. Legislators Heinz, Stiganga, Vero, Fagion, Sierra, Sassy, Luhon. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Emergency Services to accept and appropriate grant funds from the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services. Questions or comments? Okay, this is a voice vote as well, so all in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Number twelve. Legislators Heinz, Stiganga, Vero, Fagion, Sierra, Sassy, Luhon. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Emergency Services to accept and appropriate grant funds from the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services. Questions or comments? Okay, this is a voice vote as well, so all in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? The motion is carried, and we move to number twelve. Legislators Sierra, Sassy, Stiganga, Tortell. Resolution authorizing the county executive to submit the fiscal year 2022 annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for the purposes of applying for, accepting, and appropriating certain federal funds for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program, the Home Investment Partnerships, Home Program, and the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG Program. Luhon?
Aye.
Luhon added? Tuohy?
Added, please.
Minority Leader Paduk, did you want to be added as well? Any other comments? I would just like to say, yes.
I just add to this that I sit on the Community Development Advisory Board, and that this program is a fantastic program. It comes from the federal government for HUD, and it's administered, and these dollars are given away or granted to municipalities in Orange County, and it has been in effect for decades, and they do a great job, and they help our senior citizen centers and various projects in the villages and the towns. I just hope that all, everyone will vote on that.
Thank you so much, Legislator Tuohy. I too sit on that committee, and I was going to mention, I've been on it for quite a long time, even back when I was supervisor, and it is actually one of the most rewarding committees you can sit on. But other than that, it helps each and every municipality. It's a competitive grant, and it has made remarkable differences in each one of your municipalities, so I too echo your sentiments. Thank you. Legislator Menuda?
Thank you, Chairwoman. I think this is a wonderful program. I will be abstaining from this vote.
Okay. That's one abstention. Okay, and this was labeled as a voice vote? Yeah, let's do a roll call since we do have one abstention. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton? Resha? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulasek? Luhon? Menuda? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tortell? Tuohy? Benelli? Aye. Ninety ayes, one abstention. Thank you. Okay, we're on number thirteen, which is a voice vote. Legislators Sierra, Sassy, Tortell. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Youth Bureau to accept additional funding from the New York State Office of Children and Family Services. Comments? Minority Leader Paduk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to be added, but just want to mention that this is $90,000 for a gun violence prevention program. They'll be, they'll provide youth engagement activities, fourteen to twenty-four, with extended hours and weekends in areas of high gun violence throughout the city of Middletown. So it's important that you know that, that we're not just accepting money willy-nilly. It's going to a program where we really need to address certain issues like that, so thank you. Please add me.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your comments. Legislator Luhon?
Like to be added, Madam Chair?
Absolutely, thank you. Legislator Sullivan? Sullivan? Sutherland?
Add it, please.
Okay, and this is a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. We move on to number fourteen, which is also a voice vote. Legislators Tortell, Tuohy, Benton, and Agnastakis. Resolution making a supplemental appropriations of a 2021 county budget for the Valley View Center for Nursing Care and Rehabilitation. Comments? Questions? Mr. Gangga added, please. Sutherland added as well. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number fifteen, which is also a voice vote. Legislators Tortell and Sutherland. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Health to appropriate third-year budget period funds from the New York State Department of Health. Comments? Questions? Ryskevich added? Luhon added?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Chaney added as well? Tortell?
Yes, please do. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. This resolution and this money goes to help the migrant farmworkers that serve in our county. This money is used for health service programs, outreach, and education, and I really hope all the members sign on and support this resolution. Thank you.
Do we have approved or back to me?
Excuse me, please. Right. We have, any other comments on number fifteen? All right, voice vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Number sixteen, and I'm going to use a roll call vote for this one. Legislator Tortell, Luhon, Tuohy, and Sutherland. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Health to accept and appropriate funds from the New York State Department of Health. Any comments or questions? All right, please do the roll. Legislator Luhon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Firstly, I just want to say that, you know, it's always excellent to have people come out to the community and come to these sessions, and I understand that there is some disagreement about these funds. I will tell you this, and having seen and worked with people in the health department, as many of the legislators have done, very few people that I've seen has worked harder in the last two years to keep our community safe. They have, they have worked tirelessly, and these funds are only a small portion of a budget that was actually kept balanced. Our commissioner was excellent at making sure that that budget was, was, was as low as possible. These funds will supplement monthly expenses that were incurred during that time. And so while I understand that it's a very large amount of money, and it is your taxpayer money, but it is taxpayer money that you deserve and this county deserves, this fund is going to help our department there do its job to protect you, to protect our community.
What do you mean by protect COVID?
Now, excuse me, excuse me. Excuse me, ma'am, please. There's no comments here. Legislator Luhon has the floor.
And we don't get a chance to speak.
You had your chance to speak in public comment, and there was public comment. Thank you. Legislator Luhon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to add, and this was actually asked during the meeting, and for the last two years, we've been really trying to see how we can lower STDs amongst young individuals between the ages of eighteen and twenty-four, because unfortunately, here in Orange County, we have high levels of STDs in Orange County. One of the fellows would actually be able to help us address that issue, amongst so many other wide array of issues that affect our health here in Orange County. It's not just COVID-related, and I just, and again, I want to thank the legislators for supporting these funds, because again, this department has done amazing work. We all know that, and I just, I just, I'm not just on board, I'm fully on board with these funds. This is, this department deserves every bit of support, and I wanted to be on the record saying that. Thank you.
Thank you, Legislator Luhon. Any other comments? Legislator Sierra?
Yeah, I just want to echo the remarks of my fellow coworker here, but he's, he's correct. These funds are not only for COVID relief, but it's also for, it's going to help out the entire health department. It's going to go to a whole slew of health services, and for those of you in the audience, we do have an itemized list of what the funds are going to be allocated towards. I'm sure this document is public, and you all can receive a copy, if not on the website, from the clerk's office, and it has an allocation of how much and what the monies are going to be used for. Office supplies, travel, training, so on and so forth. I'm not going to lay them all, but we do have an itemized list of what the funds are going to be used for, and I fully support this resolution.
Excuse me, please.
Fully support this resolution, and I would urge all of my legislators to support it also. Thank you.
Thank you, Legislator Sierra. Anyone else? All right, roll call, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton? Resha? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulasek? Luhon?
Aye.
Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra?
Aye.
Stiganga? Sutherland?
Yes.
Tortell?
Yes.
Tuohy? Benelli? Twenty ayes. Number seventeen, excuse me, number seventeen, please, and this is a roll call as well. Legislators Stiganga, Tortell, Luhon, Tuohy. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create senior medical billing clerk, three medical billing clerks, and prescription insurance clerk at the Orange County Department of Residential Healthcare Services. Questions? Comments? All right, we'll do the roll call, please. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton? Resha? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulasek? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tortell? Tuohy? Benelli? Twenty ayes. Number nineteen. Legislator Sierra, Stiganga, Luhon, Tortell. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create community health outreach worker at the Orange County Department of Health. Questions? Comments? This is also a roll call, so please call the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Benton? Resha? Cheney? Fagion? Heinz? Kulasek? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Stiganga? Sutherland? Tortell? Tuohy? Benelli? Twenty ayes. Number twenty, which is also a roll call. Legislators Luhon, Tortell, Sierra. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to abolish senior clerk part-time and create senior clerk at the Orange County Department of Health. Questions? Comments? Please call the roll. Vero?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Legislators Sierra, Stiganga, Luhon, Tortel. An Act Amending the Appropriate Orange County Employment Schedules to Create Community Health Outreach Worker at the Orange County Department of Health. Questions, comments? This is also a roll call, so please call the roll. Yero.
Yes.
Kaduk.
Yes.
Amo.
Yes.
Benton. Breschek. Cheney. Fagion. Hines. Kulasek. Luhon. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ryskevich. Sassy. Sierra. Stiganga. Sutherland. Tortel. Tui. Finelli. Twenty ayes. Number twenty, which is also a roll call. Legislators Luhon, Tortel, Sierra. An Act Amending the Appropriate Orange County Employment Schedules to Abolish Senior Clerk Part-Time and Create Senior Clerk at the Orange County Department of Health. Questions, comments? Please call the roll. Yero.
Yes.
Kaduk.
Yes.
Amo.
Yes.
Benton. Breschek. Cheney. Fagion. Hines. Kulasek. Luhon. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ryskevich. Sassy. Sierra. Stiganga. Sutherland. Tortel. Tui. Finelli. Twenty ayes. Number twenty-one, which is also a roll call. Legislators Luhon, Stiganga, Tortel, O'Donnell. An Act Amending the Appropriate Orange County Employment Schedules to Abolish Senior Clerk and Data Entry Operator Two and Create Senior Data Entry and Control Clerk at the Orange County Department of Social Services. Comments, questions? Please call the roll. Yero.
Yes.
Kaduk.
Yes.
Amo.
Yes.
Benton. Breschek. Cheney. Fagion. Hines. Kulasek. Luhon. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ryskevich. Sassy. Sierra. Stiganga. Sutherland. Tortel. Tui. Finelli. Twenty ayes, Madam Chairwoman, and the desk is clear. Thank you very much. Uh, we do have some public comment for after-session. And the first, Rachel Chaput. I don't know if I'm saying your name correctly, so I apologize. Rachel? Going once, going twice, is Rachel here?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next speaker is Sandra Myruski.
Myruski.
Myruski, sorry, I apologize.
I'm gonna tell you, your health department is...
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
My name is Dr. Sandra Myruski. I hold a doctorate in educational leadership. My dissertation focused on the Constitution and the founding fathers' view of what the American school system would look like. Their plight was to create a system where a government set up on a proper basis should be supported by religion and morality, since fundamental human rights are granted by God, not by you, by God. There is no question that the government is trampling on the Constitution. Karen Colfax, my colleague, who will speak shortly, often tells me to follow the money. Well, I have. This county's school districts have accepted $152,533,000 from Chuck Schumer. Here is the caveat: 92.5% of the funds must be used towards COVID mitigation strategies. School districts put money before what is best for the children. How many parents were told of the receipt of this funding? Next, I have requested a meeting with Steve Newhouse on behalf of his constituents on several occasions. We would like to know where he stands, predominantly on the issues of masking, CRT, and vaccination status. The farthest that I have gotten is speaking with his assistant, Mary Pat Smith, who assured me that she would convey the message and get back to me. I have been waiting for three weeks. Perhaps he's busy spending his salary, which exceeds $200,000 a year, making him the highest-paid county executive in New York State. Perhaps he is busy having conversations with Bill de Blasio and Chuck Schumer, as has been reported. Your health department. Back in June, I should say, I own two daycare centers. Back in June, when the initial mandate was enacted requiring children ages two and over to be masked, I gave my parents the contact information from my liaison at the County Department of Health. They were bombarded with phone calls. No less than two hours later, I received a phone call from Dr. Irina Gelman and her attorneys, threatening me if I did not rescind my email. She indicated that the state has authority and not the county. That's a lie. That's simply not true. My schools are state-licensed, and I've been directed to the county for guidance. I submitted my proof to your attorneys, and I did not rescind my email. If the county is going to establish mandates, then they must face the consequences from the public. I am well-versed in educational law. I have assisted the public, and I will continue to do so. And I would bet any one of you, debate me on the Constitution, because I wrote a 250-page book about it, and you're trampling on it. Assemblyman Jeffrey Zinowitz has proposed a bill that would mandate school-aged children to be vaccinated. How dare he attempt to make decisions that solely belong to parents? You will experience a mass exodus of children from school, and you will lose state aid for each child. You will also be met with a barrage of lawsuits. Power that is not specifically delegated in the United States Constitution to the federal government is delegated to the states, who then delegate the power to local authorities. My simple ending is this: Do what is right and just. And I will add this: We're not afraid of you. We're done. We're done. And people are going to run us home. I'm not wearing a mask, okay? We are done with you. I'm not, I'm not forcing any of my staff to get vaccinated. How dare you? And you sat up here and you just say yes to everything. You don't listen to us. Well, don't worry about it, because we're gonna stand up. And there's your health department. I got threatened by your health department. But you know what? I didn't back down. I have no intention of backing down.
Excuse me, Ms. Buruski, your time is up.
Doctor Myruski. It's not Ms., it's doctor. Remember my 250-page dissertation on the Constitution? Who wants to debate me on the Constitution?
Doctor Buruski, your time is up.
Myruski, I said it. Myruski.
Thank you.
Go on, if anybody wants to debate me, let me know, because you'll lose.
Christine McCormick. Christine McCormick.
I would remind everybody, all the speakers, you do have three minutes, and unfortunately, we didn't hear the timer go off, so, just so you're... I, I just wanted to remind the other speakers, because I hadn't done it before, and I just want to be fair to you.
Okay, mandated inoculations. This is, this all began as a masking, vaxxed/unvaxxed issue, but has now become a loss-of-freedom and God-given rights issue that in the future can prove deadly. I refuse to keep quiet about this completely illegal government overreach and infringement of American people's rights and freedoms. The illegal mandates have been coming out of the White House, and its administration are becoming more and more egregious and dictatorial. Masks have been proven not to do what we were told they would do, and have been proven to injure people both physically and mentally, yet we are told to comply or not enter. As far as quarantining, social distancing, and lockdowns go, didn't and doesn't work, or we would still be in a crisis of pandemic two years later. Science tells us that these shots can injure and have killed many people. Check the CDC's own VAERS website. Cannot be denied that there are valid reasons people are not getting government mandated shots. They have the right to refuse. As far as human herd immunity, there's no such protection, or once again, common sense being related to a coerced and now forced inoculation. People who have had the shot are just as vulnerable to contracting the virus and passing it along, so please don't argue safety to others. Whatever their objections may be, this is America, and people have the right to say no. Unfortunately, we're losing that right to choose what's in our own best interest. How does this not make the whole country shudder and stop in its tracks? People can't see history repeating itself. What's happening is either you sit down, shut up, and comply, or you don't participate. This is real. People are losing their livelihoods on the whim of a few in power. Not only livelihoods, but some have lost their lives after being coerced and giving in to a shot they never wanted. There is no prop, no common sense, and no consistency when American people have to get shots they don't want. Test quarantine, show a passport to enter or participate, but millions of people, many sick of COVID and other diseases, are encouraged by this government to come illegally. Not racist, just stating facts. These people are not tested, not forced to mask, or allowed to refuse a shot, and then are transported all throughout America to live with full financial housing, educational, et cetera, assistance provided by the same taxpayers, who are being threatened to do everything the ones illegally here are not mandated, I'm sorry, not mandated to do. Please let some common sense creep into the picture here. If you decide to mandate this, what comes next? Segregation has already begun. Unvaxxed people are treated differently than vaxxed. In the same respect, even asking unvaccinated workers to submit to invasive and completely untrustworthy weekly testing is a huge problem. Tests are unreliable, and numbers manipulated since day one. Let's talk discrimination. Let's talk discrimination. Vaxxed, if vaxxed/unvaxxed people can contract, can contract and spread the virus, then why only unvaxxed must be tested? This is just another punishment created to wear down people until they break and give in to the demands of getting the shot. People here, is that problem here, is that consequences only fall on people who choose a different path for themselves, all within their rights to do so.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick.
Just one, one quick thing. I don't want to make light of what happened to the Jewish people, but I see what happened to them is happening here with Hitler, the way Hitler viewed people to turn on the Nazis. We don't, we don't have camps yet, but A416 is still active. Way too much power, way too much control.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. Karen Colfax. Ms. McCormick, thank you, please. Ms. McCormick, your time is up. It's not your fair as people. You are not being fair to the other people in the audience. Excuse me, deputies. Excuse me. Please don't...
We are not immune. This is just vaccinated. Some of you have vaccines.
Ms. McCormick, your comments are well-taken. Please take your seat. Ms. McCormick, please take your seat. Karen Colfax. Ms. McCormick, please take your seat. Deputy. Wait. Karen Colfax, please. Ms. McCormick, please, please sit down. Karen Colfax, thank you. Karen Colfax.
Good afternoon. I'm Karen Colfax, resident of New Hampton. I speak on behalf of children who are unable to speak for themselves. Recently, the CDC and FDA have recommended children five and up receive the experimental COVID-19 shots. According to Pfizer.com, the trials for this shot are taking place in six countries, including the USA. And I quote, "Pfizer also plans to continue to evaluate safety and long-term outcomes data from participants for a full two years." There are many articles and videos describing both long and short-term outcomes. According to the British Medical Journal, quote, "The U.S. will become the first country to give an mRNA vaccine to a young child outside of a clinical trial." After receiving this shot, adverse effects seen in young people, especially adolescent males, are pericarditis and myocarditis. During an interview with CNN, the CDC Director Rochelle Walensky admits the shot cannot prevent transmission. Despite the heartache these side effects will bring, according to the FDA calculations, their models are predicting only, quote, "one preventable COVID-19 death per million children vaccinated." Pfizer, FDA, CDC, New York State, and federal governments choose to withhold information from the public en masse. Instead, they saturate the airways with commercials targeting children, leading them to believe they will be superheroes if they get injected. It's hard to believe, but this commercial can be found at breitian.com. I would like to know why states and counties are violating the rights of citizens to conform consent. This is in clear violation of the Nuremberg Code, which protects every person from being experimented on. You need to investigate all the information regarding the COVID-19 shots. Examine peer-reviewed scientific articles regarding these experimental shots and mask mandates. There are no published, peer-reviewed articles that include control groups that support masking or injecting the children. You are an elected officials commissioned to protect the citizens of Orange County, to uphold the Constitution of the United States and past constitutional law. Our children are protected under the Constitution and are not put on this earth to be experimented on. They are made in God's image to be cherished and loved. When the time comes to make decisions regarding our children and their health, I hope you all choose to protect the children and protect their constitutional rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colfax. Juan Ayala. Juan Ayala.
We, the people, have mounting concerns about the mandates and the COVID protocols, based on the current data. Today, we are here with many questions about the effectiveness of these measures, the negative impact to public health we are observing in our country. Can you hear me now? Okay. Our first concern is that the vax mandates are not about health. Let me explain. With a grant from the National Institute of Health Research, a study was recently reported in The Lancet a few days ago on October 29th. This study came to the conclusion, fully vaccinated individuals with breakthrough infections have peak viral loads similar to unvaccinated cases. So vaccinated individuals can infect both vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals. The study concludes further, the vaccinated cases can efficiently transmit infections in household settings, including to fully vaccinated contacts. So let me tell you what that means. Whether you got into vax or not, you are still able to pass the virus to another person. If nothing else comes of hearing us out this afternoon, please hear this one message taken to heart. The vax and the unvax can equally spread the disease. Say it again. The vax and the unvax can equally spread the disease. The disease, the disease does not discriminate against who gets it or who spreads it. It's an equal opportunity infection, and our leaders need to stop making policy that treats the vax and the unvax differently. There's no rushing out to do so, and to treat people differently is a clear-cut case of discrimination. Do not ask us to comply with an unjust and discriminatory policy. We need you to be brave on this issue. We need you to take the high road. My name is Juan Ayala. I live in Middletown, New York, and if anyone wants to read the study that I'm citing, then please go to SayNoToMandates.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ayala. Deborah McGrath, it looks like. Hi.
My name's Deborah McGrath. I had the opportunity to experience corruption here firsthand in 2002 under this roof.
Ms. McGrath, you have to get closer into the microphone in order for us to...
Is that better?
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, so my name's Deborah McGrath. I'm a physical therapist. I have firsthand experience in the corruption that goes on under this roof in 2002 with my divorce, and the reason I bring that up...
Closer to the mic.
The reason I bring that up is because it left me with some health issues that I was able to overcome. I was able to overcome my health issues through natural means, not pharmaceuticals. And so I went on to put the corruption behind me, which the lawyers and judges involved, they all thought it was funny with what happened. And I was able to become a physical therapist, and I say this because I do work, I'm a, I'm a contract therapist. I work for local nursing homes all throughout the surrounding counties. I'm a little nervous, because I'm not a public speaker. So I do work throughout the local nursing homes in the surrounding counties. I see the corruption that goes on. And just recently, I, I walked out of the rehabs last August, and I just started up a couple weeks ago. I do have medical exemption. I lost my hearing 90% from the flu shot in 2005. So I went completely holistic. I don't use doctors. It is possible, through the power of prayer, God, natural means, to overcome illness and sickness. And so I say this because I'm, I'm against the mandates, obviously, and what I see in the nursing homes is sad. So I was not able to, not only able to see the corruption that goes on in amongst, you know, professionals like yourselves or organizations, but also in the healthcare institutions, where if you don't play the insurance games, you don't get the work. So your family members, your sons, your daughters, your children, your parents, you know, you think they're one of these healthcare institutions to get love and care and the right care. It's about the money. It's about the billing. I won't play the games, that's why I'm a contract therapist. I won't play the insurance games that I'm coerced into playing. That's why I do independent work, and I specialize, and I do my own independent work. It goes on. I think God's fed up with the corruption that goes on in this world, and the lack of self-respect for humanity, the, the lack of self-respect for people. It's become such greed and such corruption. It tore me apart 20 years ago, and I've had to overcome it, and through the power of prayer, like they say, the, the rate that this world is going, I don't want to see my children and my grandchildren have to deal with the corruption and the level of dishonesty, greed, and deceit, you know, and the cartoons, like she was talking about. It's disgusting. You know, when does it end? When do we stand up and take back the country? When do we stand up and say, no, these mask mandates are terrible? I've asked Steve Newhouse. I've asked Steve Newhouse to point out to me, who is giving you those numbers? The Department of Health? Hold someone accountable. Who's giving those numbers? Because in the, in the nursing homes and, and the hospitals, they're not reporting correctly to the VAERS reporting system. Many nurses are verifying that, you know, and it's, it's, it's very sad. It's, it's all about the money. The, the federal government is keeping funds from the healthcare institutions unless you force, force your employees to be vaccinated. They're withholding the Medicare/Medicaid funding. So I just want to end where, you know, I just want to end with one thing. Is it really worth it? Is it really worth religious freedom and, you know, economic disaster? You know, stand up for our country. Stand up for freedom. Stand up for our health.
Thank you for attending this afternoon. Thank you. Our next speaker is Brianna Lumbo. And I believe we saw you earlier, so welcome back.
Hi. So I'm back to talk more about a personal testimony of how all these mandates have affected me. I've been working in a nursing home. I have a master's in social work, so I'm a social worker, and I lost my job on Monday. I was one of the three people in my nursing home to refuse the vaccine mandate. So with that being said, my nursing home had a COVID outbreak this week. Nine people tested positive. Everyone in that place is vaccinated. It does not make sense. And on top of it, Barnett Health Medical Center has been sending my nursing home at least four positive COVID patients a week. Why is that happening? Why is the Department of Health allowing for COVID-positive people to go into nursing homes with terminally ill people? Why? It's not, it's not, and with that, we said it's not, it's not about health. It's really not about health, it's about control. I'm 25 years old. I just graduated. Now I'm looking for other jobs. I can't get them, because they're asking me if I'm vaccinated. That's against my HIPAA right. I have a right to not disclose my personal health information. Why is HIPAA being thrown out the window? Everyone in my nursing home knew what my status was of my health. That's not okay. To be thrown HIPAA out the window does not matter anymore, or people not being fined? Because I'm pretty sure my nursing home kicked me off, because they're not going to get their Medicaid and Medicare reimbursement now. And that's not right, because there are people who cried as I walked out that door. I'm a safety net to those residents. I watched abuse, neglect. I don't want to get emotional up here, but I've really seen the worst of it, and I've reported it to the Department of Health so many times. Where have you been? You don't care about these people, Department of Health. I called them too, and I was told to leave on Monday. They said, oh, call the state, we have nothing to do with it. So the county and the state doesn't communicate? I'm pretty sure, what I learned in schools, it starts at a local level. That's why I'm here today. I'm here because I, I need to speak my testimony. My residents are heartbroken. I, I didn't even get a proper cutoff with them. I didn't even get to tell them I was leaving. They watched me walk out that door as I was in tears. You don't think that affected their mental health? They're already depressed. 80% of that nursing home is depressed. So we want to talk about SDTs, SDTs and STIs? What about everyone that's depressed in the nursing home? What about the kids who didn't get to socialize last year? They all want to commit suicide. The suicide rate has increased double in the last few years due to the pandemic. These children are miserable. These elderly people are miserable. Pretend I was your daughter. You know, you're all here, I'm sure you all have kids. I'm 25, like I keep saying. I just graduated. Would you want your child to be in my position? Because I don't feel comfortable. This is still, so I was also a research assistant for four years. This is still in a testing trial. Guys, we're being lab rats. We're literally being tested on. You don't know the long-term effects of this. I'm not putting it into my body. I'm holistic. I refuse to put it into my body. I put my faith in God. God gets to choose what goes in my body. God gets to choose if I die and gets to choose if I get the virus. And he gets to choose how this whole world goes. So with that being said, I really hope that you guys think about what I'm saying because this has personally affected me. I just moved up here from Long Island five months ago. And now I don't have a job and I have bills to pay.
Thank you, Ms. Lumbo. Michael Mauro. Michael Mauro.
The county doesn't have a job.
Excuse me, sir. If you don't stop being disruptive, you'll be asked to leave the chambers. Michael Mauro, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've been an Orange County resident for 33 years. Never stepped foot in this chamber, never thought I'd have to. But I think desperate time, call for desperate measures. But I do want to applaud Chairman Steve Bresch and Tom Fagion for their proposed resolution that declared opposition to vax mandates for government workers. Thank you, gentlemen. I know this resolution got shot down, never even made it into this chamber. I think because of County Executive Newhouse, but it was a gallant effort again. Thank you. These government vax mandates are a blatant attack on our constitutional rights. So much is wrong here, but on the most rudimentary level, these shots must comply with the emergency use authorization law, which make it clear that a person can refuse to be part of an experiment. Very important here is the need for informed consent. Anyone who agrees to be part of this gene-altering medical experiment that continues till 2023 must give their informed consent. And you must know that. These two gentlemen can't be the only two guys that know that law. Second, they must also be told of the potential benefits and risks to the extent that these risks and benefits are unknown. Are they being told that 17,000 have died according to the VAERS reporting? You get that number, 17,000?
It's underreported.
Underreported, we all know that. We're not going to even go there, but 17,000 is a big number. Another 800,000 have reported adverse effects, some afflicted with serious life-altering outcomes. And they're told that they can still, as has been noted already, transmit the disease afterwards and they can still get the disease as well. Where's the benefits of the vaccine? Accordingly, the law clearly states that these people have the right, an absolute right, to refuse the jab as part of the rules for informed consent. Is it informed consent if someone's holding a gun to your head and threatens if you don't take it? I believe that's taking away one's livelihood for noncompliance is equal to holding a gun to one's head. How is it? How is that not medical tyranny? These vax mandates violate the most central part of the EAU law. If informed consent has not been given, if one is coerced into taking the jab, the government is in violation of the law. The government forcing the jab then may face absolute liability for what happens to those coerced. The manufacturer could be free from any liability for harm, I can't believe they got this, under the umbrella that was given to them by the government. But that liability would not run with those forcing the ejections against the EAU law. I think government officials forcing an experiment on those who would otherwise not take part in the experiment may be held to a different standard. Imagine a civil lawsuit for the life of a spouse lost because they were forced contrary to informed consent to take the vax. Can you live with that? The proposed resolution stated every medical intervention requires informed consent and a right of refusal, including the COVID-19 vaccine. Bravo for Bresch and Fagion, who clearly read the law. I think legislators Bresch and Fagion showed themselves to be in a lead above the rest of you.
Mr. Mauro, please conclude your. Mr. Mauro, please conclude. Javier Vasquez. Thank you. Javier Vasquez. Javier Vasquez.
Good morning, committee, ladies and gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
My name is Javier Vasquez. I served honorably in the Marine Corps.
Thank you.
I'd like to make an example of state emergencies using national emergency as an illustration point. There are still 32 national emergencies still in effect since 1979. A few of them can still be used today in many different ways and broad ways. Freezing funds for the property of persons who commit and threaten to commit and support terrorism. Nowadays, some Christians are labeled as terrorists, as radical right. And this is just one example of many things that are still considered an emergency that can be used against us. So I'm against using mandates as an emergency to enforce us to take vaccines. I have many reasons why I wouldn't take a vaccine, but to keep it simple, it's poison. This specific vaccine shouldn't be considered a safe vaccine. There are many examples that can be made with scientists, doctors, all of it, which is actually being ignored statewide, worldwide as well, and not being displayed in the media. Media being used as a toolbox to manipulate many. My father was manipulated into taking the vaccine and eventually, within two months, his health deteriorated to his death. Within that time that he was in the hospital, I tried to negotiate with the doctors. They didn't want to listen to me because they're told by CDC and other professional quote-unquote institutes that the vaccine is safe. So they're closed-minded to listen to even the son. I was given a very hard time. I asked if they can counterattack the vaccine. They refused and said it's not a factor. The only opportunity that I got with my father was through prayer, which was answered. While he was in a coma, he woke up from the coma, his eyes were blue, facing the sky. They turned back to his original color. God granted me the opportunity to say my goodbyes. I would like you to join the rest of this county in trying to fight against what's going on in this world, in this country, and for a lot of corruption that's obviously going on and being ignored. A lot of veterans died for this country, for its freedom. A lot of our ancestors died to come to this country. We need to honor that. God bless you.
Matt Higgins. Excuse me, sir. I'm not going to have to warn you again. Please. Mr. Higgins.
So I come to you here today about the mandates and how you could do something, but you choose not to do anything. And somebody over here said they would look into it and maybe they could pass a law to not have a mandate in Orange County. But guess what? You guys are too lazy and you won't do anything about it. You could do something, but you won't. Because you're either lazy or I don't know what you are. I have no idea what you people are, but you're not for me. And that's why I'm leaving this county. Because of you. And you're allowing these mandates to carry on for our children and for your people, even though these vaccines are whacking people and schwacking people left and right. You don't care. You're going to put these people that were in the hospitals fixing up people and saving people's lives and firemen and police. And they're all going to have to either quit or be fired, find a new job or live somewhere else because you're not doing anything because you're too lazy. They passed a law in California, for Christ's sake. In California, they passed a law in a California county to say, no mandates. In this county, you're not allowed to have a mandate for a vaccine or a vaccine passport. They did it in California, but you're too lazy to do anything. Or you don't have the mind to do it. Or you're just stepping along in this operation lockstep like every other country is going along with these passports where you have, how many slots on the card are there? Do you know how many? I don't have one, but I think there's four or five. Don't you think that there's a reason for that? Because you're going to have to keep going until you're going to have to, they're going to change the definition of it anyway. So you were vaccinated last year. You're not going to be vaccinated this year until you get your booster, right? Okay? Keep getting your booster every six months. They don't work past five months, so you're going to have to get another shot. And now they're coming after the children and you're letting them do it because you're not doing a damn thing about it. And that's where you should be drawing the line. Have some guts, will you? They're after the children now. And these children are being affected badly, getting myocarditis, parotiditis, and winding up in wheelchairs, not able to speak. And you won't see that on the media or you won't see that on the YouTube or whatever. But there's people getting screwed up big time and they're little children. They're your grandchildren. They're your own children. I won't be around for it. I won't stick around in a county like this with you lazy slobs that won't do anything for the people and stick up for children. I'm not sticking around. You know, Newhouse spouts off about his numbers and they don't agree with the numbers from the Public Health of England, which show that 80% of the vaccine twice-dosed died. Look it up. There you go. And the majority of the people in the hospitals now are fully vaccinated? That's not the news that you get, but that's a fact. Look it up. I'll look help the middle.
Include your comments. Mr. Higgins, thank you.
Yeah, so long as my last speech, you won't have to deal with me again. God love you and, you know, do what I say.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
In honor of the people, I hope that you do something, you lazy bums.
James Snyder. Is James Snyder here?
How are you doing? Let's talk about the science of these vaccines. If we are serious about the science, we should listen to Dr. Peter McCullough. Dr. McCullough is a practicing.
James, come closer to the mic so we can hear you.
If we are serious about science, we should listen to Dr. Peter McCullough. Dr. McCullough is a practicing internist, cardiologist and epidemiologist. He has more than 1,000 publications with 600 citations in the National Library of Medicine. He serves on the editorial boards of multiple specialty journals and has been a member or chair of data safety monitoring boards of 24 randomized clinical trials. Dr. McCullough believes that natural immunity for those who have recovered from COVID-19 is, quote, "robust, complete and durable," unquote. He said there are 29 supportive studies showing the superiority of natural immunity. If you take the jab after recovering from the illness, he sees no benefit. Not only that, he says he knows of no credible studies that show the vaccine would have a positive influence on the already existing immunity. However, the opposite is true. Dr. McCullough says there are six studies showing that the vaccine can do harm to the COVID-recovered. So in his clinical judgment, McCullough believes the vaccines contrandictate it for those with natural immunity. And those studies can be provided, by the way. Here's the takeaway, right? Dr. McCullough says, quote, "Our best assets are the COVID-recovered," unquote. Those with natural immunity can work when other employees fall ill. In fact, Dr. McCullough recovered from a case of COVID-19 last October and has been treating patients with the virus without contracting it again himself. So let us not throw out the medical staff at our hospitals, right? The heroes who blazed through the worst of the pandemic when so little was known at the time? These people, by most accounts, these people, by most accounts are either immune to the disease, he believes that about 15% are immune, or they have robust natural immunity. This has gone on long enough so that it seems estimated in an article in the British Medical Journal that at least one-third of the American population has recovered from a COVID-19 infection and therefore has natural immunity. This is about numbers. Think of that. It's about the numbers. One-third of everyone probably has the best immunity you can get. Another 15 will never fall ill with COVID. That's almost 50%, 50, without any need for a vaccine at all. Are you people brave enough to be leaders who actually reason and apply science? Who can actually add numbers? Mr. O'Donnell, I'm speaking to you because you are the chairman of the Health Committee. Do you dare reach out to Dr. McCullough and get his input on how best to use the greatest asset in the fight against COVID, these naturally immune people who are residing right here in our county?
Mr. Snyder, please conclude your comments. Thank you. The next speaker is Andre Stoltz.
Good afternoon and thank you for your time. I'm going to read some stats from the VAERS website, which is sponsored by the CDC, the FDA and HHS. So from December 2020 until present, these stats, but I'm going to take you from September 24th. There were 752,000 adverse reactions. Then in October, the end of October, there was 837,000. That's 65,000 more reactions. Hospitalizations in the end of September was 71,000. And it was 86,000 in the end of October. That's 15,000. Permanent disabilities, 22,000 in the end of September. The end of October was 27,000. That's 5,000 more permanent disabilities. And there's birth defects. I saw an ad on a bus, somebody sent me a photo of an ad on a bus, and it said, "Children have strokes too." They are preparing us for the injuries that they know the children are going to get. One of the biggest injuries is the myocarditis, the blood cots, bleeding of the brain. I know an 18-year-old local boy who had a heart attack after his vaccine. How many 18-year-old men, boys have heart attacks? I don't know any. I understand that why you may not be as informed as you should be because the mainstream media has a whole different narrative than a lot of the information we are getting. So I urge you to read a book. It's coming out this week, The Real Anthony Fauci by Robert F. Kennedy Jr. This is really going to help you. Because I know what you're hearing on a TV and what you're getting and whatever stats, whatever, are very different than the reality. And we have to unpack the COVID matrix from the mainstream narrative. I think that's a problem. And I think with that book, you can begin to do that and with credible sources. Well, I think there's hope because there is immunity in stamps because nobody in the post office is mandated to take a shot.
Is that true? Excuse me, please.
So why aren't the postal workers mandated? If it is such a wildfire contagious virus, why am I so close to this mic? And everybody's been up here. So I just wanted to say that you have to get more sources. Start with the book, The Real Anthony Fauci, and talk amongst yourselves with it. Okay? Thank you so much.
Christine Kanazon. Christine?
Hi, my name is Chris Kanazon. Am I close enough? In my employment, I am required to be tested weekly using my time and my money because I am not vaccinated. But in the meantime, my coworkers who are vaccinated do not have to be tested, but at the same time, they can get COVID and transmit it. So they're being protected from me, but who's protecting me? I'm being exposed to them. So to me, I feel like I'm being penalized because I am not vaccinated. Okay? As a taxpayer and an American citizen, I ask you to protect my constitutional right to make the decision not to be mandated to get a vaccine. I just ask that you protect my constitutional right. And in order just to keep my job and live a normal life, because they're taking all of that away. I can't even go to Manhattan to go see a show because I'm not vaccinated. I feel the pandemic has been exaggerated to instill fear into people. Numbers of deaths have been skewed in the hospitals. In 2020, when you died, it was COVID. That was it. It was COVID. And coincidentally, every time the hospital gave numbers, they got a kickback from the government. So every time you said somebody died from COVID, you got money in the hospital. COVID vaccine not properly tested, we are being used as guinea pigs, us and our children. I'm sorry, I just wrote all of this. And interestingly, pharmaceuticals are exempt from any liability. So they can kill you, they cannot get sued. And that's the way it goes. The secrecy in reporting vaccine adverse reactions alarms me. They're not telling you the truth. As someone said, media is not reporting what is really truly happening. Who owns them? Who knows? Which big guys? Treatments such as ivermectin, which has been proven, it has been proven to be successful. The government, CDC and FDA refuse to use, even try. How many lives have been uselessly lost because of this? Because they want to push that COVID vaccine. Now Big Pharma has a vaccine for our five to 11-year-olds. In 2020, the number of children getting COVID was negligible. All of a sudden, they've got the vaccine and now, oh, such an uprising in children getting COVID. In the early 2000s, Bill Gates and Dr. Fauci shook hands and cemented an agreement saying they will create a global vaccine. Here we are, 2020, well, 2019, it was created. Their cemented agreement came to fruition. 2019, the COVID virus was created in the Wuhan lab, which was funded by the NIH, which Dr. Fauci is associated with. I see, I feel Dr. Fauci and Bill Gates need to be thoroughly investigated.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you so much for your comments and attending this afternoon. Our next speaker is Jessica Yazo.
Hi, good afternoon. I am bringing to your attention the severe side effects of the COVID-19 vaccine suffered by citizens in Orange County. The push to get the COVID mRNA vaccination is resulting in an increase of health issues. The prevalence of side effects is becoming a health crisis in Orange County. It is your responsibility to obtain the data at the Health Department and the four hospitals in Orange County. We want an audit of the hospital records of the number of COVID-vaxxed injured and vaxxed deaths. The hospitals are publicly taxpayer-funded. The legislators are accountable to research and publicly collect and report the vax reaction data. The high number of vaccinations caused an increase in Guillain-Barre syndrome. I hope you all know and research what that is. And it causes other issues too, this vaccination, with the heart, blood pressure, stroke, shingles, hemorrhagic brain bleeding. I know somebody in St. Luke's Hospital with that right now. We all need to research this. We're all human. This, that's what this is about. We expect you to take action to keep Orange County safe. We, the people of Orange County, are very concerned about the health issues that are arising in our county. One in 100,000 usually get Guillain-Barre syndrome. There are far more cases in hospitals and nursing homes in Orange County stemming from the COVID vaccination. At least eight cases that I know of, far higher than normal. This calls for legislative action. Okay? And you guys all, federal law, federal law requires doctors to report vaccination side effects to the CDC. We, the people, are telling you to stand up to the COVID vaccine mandate at the hospitals and school boards in Orange County. Please, please. Are these side effects being reported to our county Health Department or the CDC? It is your responsibility to check and make sure that, and there is no excuse. Mr. O'Donnell, where are you? There's no excuse. You have the power and action to take action, yet so far, you have done nothing, nothing. Orange County needs your help to research these vaccine reactions, to protect the people of Orange County. We could change, we have the power to change Orange County and this whole country. Okay? And we demand here and now that you do everything in your power.
Ms. Yazoo, thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it.
There is no state of emergency. Ms. Yazoo, your, thank you.
Jose Matos? Jose Matos? Is Jose here? Oh, here you are.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jose Matos. I'm a resident of New Windsor, New York. I'm actually a two-time cancer survivor turned personal trainer and an inventor of a fitness product that is currently in over 23 countries right now. I've been very, always been very passionate about health and fitness. And I'm here to talk about how the CDC, all of our health regulatory agencies in our country don't care about our health because they're all regulatory captured by Big Pharma and they can't be trusted. They don't care about our health. And they're the ones that are contributing to creating these vaccine mandates, which is leading to people losing jobs and also, which is leading to the insane deployment of a vaccine that is completely experimental, not only to, for adults, but also to our children. I don't know if any of you are aware that Big Pharma, right now, actually creates their, does their own data and studies for their pharmaceuticals, and then they submit the data to the FDA. It's like grading your own test, you know? Like, by show of hands, how many of you think that makes sense? That I, I'm a pharmaceutical company. I create my own tests, I do my own data, and I submit that to the FDA for approval. Does that make sense by show of hands?
Mr. Matos, not an interaction, please.
Okay, I'm, all right, I'm just saying. How about this? Does anybody, does anybody here, just by a show of hands, know what Carminati is? Carminati. Does anybody know what Carminati? Maybe not, right? So Carminati is actually the drug that is FDA-approved right now? That's not even available in the United States? Okay, so this is something you really have to understand. The FDA cannot be trusted. They're, the CDC, they're corrupt organizations. And this is not just, yeah, and this, this is not just my words or the beliefs that we hold. You have US senators from Congress. You have Senator Rand Paul, Marjorie Taylor Greene, Tom Cotton. Many, many US senators and people from Congress, representatives, hold this same belief because they are a corrupt organization. And they're creating these guidelines, they're giving these guidelines to our executive branch of government that is trickling down into the state and then to the county level. And so I want to play you a video real quick, that this is just breaking news, what came out today about an FDA whistleblower explaining how corrupt the process was for creating these vaccines. So just take a listen to this real quick.
So you're talking about one of the premier medical publications in the world. Research this, reviewed this, investigated this. I looked and talked to people that knew her, talked to other people that were aware of what was happening with these companies doing these clinical testing for the COVID-19 vaccine. And they confirmed every single disturbing aspect and attribute of this. They confirmed that what happened is, if you have a whistleblower, and the case that will be filed is for children's health defense against the FDA related to emergency use authorized for this vaccine for little children. And that's what led her to COVID.
Is there much more to that?
Yeah, so anyway, I would hope that you all would just look into the FDA and how they are authorizing these drugs. And, you know, our children, our lives are at risk. And I just petition you all to, please don't be silent. You know, Martin Luther King said that in the end, it will not be the words of our enemies that we will remember, but it'll be the silence of our friends. Please don't be silent.
Melissa Klingman? Melissa Klingman?
Hi, everyone. I live in Montgomery. My name's Melissa. And I work in IT, so I tend to work a lot with data. But I guess I'll get started here. So according to the dictionary, the definition of a state of emergency is a situation of urgent need for help and relief brought out by a natural disaster, act of terrorism, or other crisis, especially as declared by the governor, president, mayor, or other elected official. When we talk about, oh. So we are told that the vaccine would reduce infection or deaths in our community, and that's why the program was started. And based on, anyways, I suspect that because the data... Step back for a second. So we've been told that it's going to help our community. And I've been watching Executive Newhouse's reports, and I noticed that he always talks about the number of deaths. And he always talks about how many cases. But he never tells me a story of how this is improving the situation. So he never says, for example, in the month of August, before the vaccine, we had X number of deaths. And now that we're vaccinating, we have less. And so I kind of dug into that data because I was curious. Because wouldn't you use that as proof that this was effective? So everybody get on board? But what I found was really disturbing. August of 2020, before we started doing all these vaccinations, we had four deaths in Orange County. In 2021, we had 16. You should be able to verify that pretty easily because it should be easier for you. I've really had to dig. September, there were four in 2020, but 2021, we had 21, 21 people.
Four of them were in my nursing home.
Four of them weren't under use. She knew them.
Vaccinated.
All right, let's not have. In October, we had seven in 2020, and we have 17 now. So it's my understanding that we still have, so at this point, we have 60% of people in the county, 58% vaccinated. But we have more deaths. And if you take a look at the running data, you will see that through the vaccination process, you can tell that we had more cases in January and February than we ever did during the height of the pandemic. And this continues. And if you really take a look at the data, it's really disturbing because you can almost see when they do the mandates. You can see a bump in cases. I just would expect that if we're doing stuff, if we're going out and mandating vaccinations for people, that it would be to improve public health. And we're just not seeing that.
Thank you very much for your comments. Joe Murtaugh? Joe Murtaugh?
I would ask that one of the legislatures, or all of the legislatures, make legislation against masking the kids in school. I, I don't know, understand why we're busy protecting the teachers' unions and the teachers from the children. Shouldn't we be protecting the children? And wearing masks is not protecting the children. It's hurting their self-esteem. It's hurting, I don't know. So I would, I would ask the legislature to look into legislation in that regard. So obviously, I'm against the mandate and the vaccine being mandated. And now it's been approved for children. You know, on a constitutional level, the freedom of religion would probably, you know, probably wouldn't want to take a vaccine that's made from fetal stem cells. Not all the vaccines, but two out of three. On mandates, I'd like the two legislatures who did stand up against mandates are to be applauded. Through this loose coalition of all these people that I, that I love now, it's come back to me that other legislatures are also against the mandate. And I see from a, from a local level to the national level in different legislative organizations that a lot of people talk the talk, but when it comes to time to walk the walk, they're, they're not, they're not doing what they say. They're not following through. So, you know, that's been a problem, I thought, at the national level. And, but, you know, in this group contacting, you know, a lot of legislatures, but only some of them, a lot of them said they were against mandates, but only two took any action. So, and I'm, I'm going to read the rest of my time. COVID vaccinated showed significant increases in heart issues. A study of hospitalized patients who had received the COVID-19 vaccine showed major increases in certain heart issues beyond the normal expected. Sample study covered 40 hospitals in Washington, Oregon, Montana, and Los Angeles County, California. The patients were diagnosed with myocarditis, myoparocarditis, or parocarditis, according to their emergency room reports. Among more than 2 million individuals who received at least one dose, 58.9% were women with a median age of 57 years. 25% of myocarditis cases had ejection fractions of 50%, 50% or less when the increase in long-term cardiac complications. The increase in parocarditis beyond what would normally be expected was up by 60%, while the number of, while the number of myoparocarditis was elevated by 62%. Myocarditis developed rapidly in younger patients, mostly after the second vaccination. The JAMA Journal of American Medicine article said parocarditis affected older patients...
Mr. Murtaugh, please conclude your comments.
Yeah, so I just want to reference that.
Thank you.
Twitter, and JAMA, August 4, 2021. There was also a Washington Post article that I wanted to get to, July 29, 2021. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Michael Citarella?
Thank you very, can you hear me? Thank you very much for allowing me to come. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I am against the mandates, but I just want to tell a little testimony. I worked in the healthcare for 19 years and worked with development disability. And last year, when the COVID hit, I didn't take the vaccine. I wasn't tested at all. I did natural herbology. And I worked with our patients. Our patients got well. There was over 20 of them. And what I want to share is that they're, they're okay now. There's, there's no problem going on. We were going to the hospital during COVID. We were going back and forth to the hospital. We had lots of people sick. We used some herbs even in our place, and it worked. So I'm not saying that, what I want to say is, I want you to consider what's really going on out there. And right now, I don't have the vaccine. I didn't take it. I don't plan on taking it. But I'm, I hope the mandates won't come down because I would have to leave the job. And I've been there 19 years, and I really appreciate what I'm doing with these folks. And these folks are okay. They like us. So thank you very much for allowing me to share.
Thank you for coming. Kyle Venta? Kyle Venter?
So I don't really trust statistics, so I can't really speak because there's statistics for both sides of the story. All I can know is what I know personally. I know people that took the vaccine and they're fine. People that took the vaccine, they got very hurt from it.
Kyle, a little closer to the mic.
I know people that took the vaccine and they got very hurt from it. One of my clients I worked for for five years, he took the vaccine. He died 10 years later. He passed away, or 10 days later. I have friends that have thyroid issues. I have friends that have chronic headaches. I have, I know people that took the vaccine and they're fine. But we don't have any long-term studies on any kind of long-term health effects. And a lot of the things we see in the media and the news is, this is an emergency vaccine. You know, they're saying that the benefits outweigh the side effects. And I don't see that personally as being part of the case. Like my friend just said, he's worked in healthcare for 19 years. And if you guys mandate it, he won't be able to work there anymore. My little brother has done four and a half years in the Marine Corps, and he is being threatened to be kicked out because he will not take the vaccine. He's telling me stories about guys that are in the Marines that have been there for 19 years. They're getting let go without their pensions and all their benefits. And it is not fair, you know? And I don't know what's going on with Orange County. Is that what's going to happen to the people that work here that don't take the vaccine? And that's going to happen to them? I don't know. That seems like it's going to be the case. That's not really a good thing for these people, you know? It kind of sucks. It really does. And that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker is Ronna Bork. And I think we saw you at the beginning of our public participation at the beginning of the meeting, so welcome back.
I get to round it up, I guess. This is a local group, and I know that you feel maybe you don't have the power of the state. You don't have the power of a federal government. Well, I started reading about the Local Government Handbook, which I recommend you all read. And New York is a home rule state. Our power is here. You've got it. You've got the power. You have the power to make the difference. We are in pain. We are hurting. Every one of you here sitting will face your own problems soon. I tell you this. Those mandates are not going to stop with two. They're going to want you to get a booster. Are you going to take that gun to your head, to your wife's head, to your son's head, to your daughter's head, to your grandchildren's head, and watch the Russian roulette of that vaccine? You can stop it. Home rule starts here. Try it. Upstate, there's a county that declared themselves a constitutional county. Guess what? You can make great history here. You can be brave. Your health department cannot take that money and just say, "Oh, we're going to spend it on STIs and other nice things." No, you're going to have to spend it on COVID. And you can't go spend, you can't take the money and then fix the budget from last year. That's not... That's not going to happen. The state is giving you that money for a reason.
Control.
Yep, control. If you want to be controlled by the state, take their money. But I'm tired of you, I'm tired of us not taking our own lives in our own hand. We learned a long time ago, as we've been watching this, that it's all in our hands. You are the local guys. You can make the big difference here. You can make history, guys. My daughter is an infectious disease doctor. She lined up first one to take the shot, and now she tells me she's giving the grandchildren the shot when she can soon. To me, this is hell. I don't know how she doesn't read and know, she's the brightest child I have, but for some reason, the medical community has gone absolutely insane and delusional. It is time for legislators to stand up and to take action and to make home rule matter. And I'm begging you guys, think about it. Think about it. You'll all have a position higher up, I promise you, because the people are strong. I have never seen an outpouring of people like now.
Grass movement.
The grassroots movement is strong. Think about becoming a constitutional...
Your, your time is up, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Be the people.
This was our last speaker. This was our, this was our last speaker. I thank you all very much for coming and expressing your concerns, and we appreciate that, and we will take it under consideration. Motion to close.
Second.
And second. Thank you all very much. Have a great afternoon.